Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular meeting of the South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, and we'll be starting the meeting. And I'm the Vice President Bianca Richards. Our President Dean Serwin couldn't be here today. So should we do roll call?
Yeah, sure. Bianca Richards.
Present.
Kenneth Gross.
Here.
FJ Pratt.
Here.
Thank you.
Yeah, and FJ's virtual, and Annie will be joining us shortly. She, Annie's coming online. And our Council Liaison is here, present, Diana Mahmood, and our friends Ellen Torres is here. Okay, and are there any public comments?
No.
Okay, no public, so we'll proceed on to our presentation. Welcome, everybody. So the floor is yours.
Yeah, welcome. And I guess I'll just welcome our consultants. We have Monique Zizan-Henni and James Clanton, JR Clanton, and Jason Gang and Aftu Kedar, Afti. And so I will turn it over to you guys, and you can take it away. And Sean should enable it so you can share your screen.
Excellent, excellent. So I'll go ahead and share the screen here in a second. But first, my name is Jason Gang, and I'm with Barry Dunn. And it's a real pleasure to be with you here this evening. We're so excited to get to this point, to present where we are so far with your team on planning efforts. My role for the project is project manager. And so what that means is I'm the main point of contact for the team, and just making sure that we're following through and fully following all the steps and the process that we committed to. And again, it's just been such a pleasure. I'll say that, you know, we do planning all over the country, and Kathy and team have been of the very best as far as rolling up their sleeves and fully diving into everything and making sure this is a really comprehensive process. So I can't thank the team and your community enough for how outstanding they've been through the process. So again, Jason Gang, and I'll be doing some of the presenting this evening, but I also want to very briefly introduce the other team members. If the team members could please say their name and the role they've had on this project, I'd really appreciate that. Monique, please.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, good. Okay, hi, I'm Monique Zizan-Henni, and I'm the library subject matter expert on this project. It's been great. Thank you.
And JR Clanton, please.
Hello, I'm JR Clanton, and I've been happy to work on this project as a library expert and a fellow consultant.
And Afti, please.
My name is Afti. I'm with Barry Dunn. My role is I was doing behind the scene. I was on the scene collecting data and analyzing them and any documentation and report. So I was very excited to be with the team and Pasadena.
Awesome. Thank you, team, so much for the brief introductions. I'm going to go ahead and and share the screen, and hopefully that'll give me the app. It looks like it's going to work just fine. Let me go right to that. Are folks seeing the presentation? My head nod, JR? Yes, okay, thank you. Let me go ahead and start from the beginning here. So we're, again, so excited to be with you here this evening. We have put together a agenda of some key areas that we want to highlight. Certainly, we're very interested tonight in your feedback, your, certainly your comments and your questions. And we look forward to really engaging in some discussion this evening. We want to talk about the overall process, give you an overview of kind of how we did, you know, what we did. How do we get to some of these recommendations and findings? Talk about specifically on the engagement areas, give you some highlights on that process. We do want to share with you the library's updated mission statement, roles of the library, goals for the future, as well as, you know, what are the next steps after tonight? So we're going to be doing that hopefully successfully with you here this evening. The purpose of the plan, and this is probably nothing new to you, but I just, I like to restate this. This is specifically from the project proposal from the library that talks about shaping the programs and services for the next five years. So, you know, again, the time period is, of course, those five years that we've been really focusing our efforts on. The overall kind of, you're going to see this slide again, just as a reminder, but kind of gives you a little bit more insight as to, you know, how we, the overall process comes together. We start with kind of a high level of community perspectives and looking at, you know, what are the needs in the community? And then looking at the strengths and challenges and vision, and then then from there, going into what, what is a role of the library in those community-wide needs and those challenges and opportunities? And then from there, we dive into the library mission and vision, specifically then going into goals, tasks, as well as performance measures to help move us along. But that kind of gives you a really high level of the flow of going from a high, a community-wide perspective, and then drilling down right into the roles of the library and how they're going to meet those evolving community needs. And on the timeline, just to kind of give you a quick update as to where we are, this arrow here says we are here. So gives you an idea of the phases that we've been through to date as well, and, you know, kind of coming up to the strategic plan draft and sort of final development of the plan. And certainly, a really critical step was coming here this evening to get your feedback. JR, please.
Yeah, so the first thing, thank you, Jason. The first thing we wanted to cover with you all was just a brief overview of some of the analysis and engagement we did. When we start a strategic plan process like this, there's really three things that we do in this phase. We do an environmental scan where we look at library metrics specific for South Pasadena Public Library. We look at the community data, some demographics, and then we look at local and national trends or things that are going on in the library world in order to to help influence some of the direction in the plan. Next, we do stakeholder interviews. And so we do, we do one-on-one interviews with staff and community representatives, as well as group interviews. And for South Pasadena, we met with the friends, we met with you all, and we also met with staff groups. You know, just some of the one-on-one interviews we did, we met with other city departments, we had representatives from the police department, community services. And then we met with some community groups as we met with the president of the South Pasadena Chinese American Club, South Pasadena Arts Council, as well as the high school librarian from South Pasadena High School. Finally, we have social pinpoint, which is our online engagement tool. That was the survey that South Pasadena has the, holds the record for most surveys, online surveys taken by Barry Dunn, with 400 surveys taken. It's just incredible. And then there's also an idea board where people can post their ideas, and we capture all of that input and synthesize it for consideration when we're actually doing the plan development. Jason. So some of, one of the most interesting things in the environmental scan that came out of it, that came out of the environmental scan was the drive time analysis. So what you see on this screen, and I know it's, it's pretty small, so that blue dot is the South Pasadena Public Library. And then the red circle in the middle represents what's considered a five-minute drive time analysis. The green is what's considered a 10-minute drive time analysis, and, and the blue is a 15-minute drive time analysis. And why this is important is when you're trying to figure out who, who is the community that's really using your library, that five and 10-minute bubble, those are bubbles, rather, are really going to be typically your core users. 10 minutes is a standard in a lot of different industries. If you can catch a bus within 10 minutes reliably, you'll take the bus. 10 minutes is considered really to be that it's close enough that I'm going to really use it frequently. And so for, we looked at not only the demographic information for the five-minute, I'm sorry, for the city. We also looked at five, 10, and 15 minute, which I'll share with you, so you can get a better understanding of who's using this library. And so what you'll see here is that when you look at the city of South Pasadena's demographics, you've probably seen them before. It's 25, around 25,000 residents, a little bit older population compared to state average, average household size, and then some median household income. So a fairly affluent community. But then when you look within five minutes, the people who are closest to the library, you see that the actual population there is almost double. 45,000 people are live within five minutes of the library. And because in California, people can use whichever library system they want, that's really a better understanding of who your core user group is going to be. It's also a little bit younger. The household sizes are slightly bigger, but the household income is lower. And then when you get to that 10 minutes, it's significantly younger and lower. And so this is important when you're considering who's actually using the library. These metrics would tell me that this library, though the city is only 25,000 people, this library is probably getting used for a pot, for a library system that's more comparable to 50,000 plus. Jason? Oh, sorry. Yeah. And so this is just a little overview of the library structure, organization chart. Jason. And then these are some of the key library stats that we were looking at for comparisons with other library systems. So you see the budget, how many employees are there? And it is important to note that there's 10 full-time employees, and then the rest of those eight full-time equivalent positions are spread amongst a number of other staff. It's not just 18 staff. Yeah, thank you. And so then, these are some of the peer communities, so other library systems that were chosen to compare to in California, based upon population, service areas, other similar factors. And so you can see here, population served. Jason, oh, and South Pasadena is in the red. Here you can see square footage. So it's, it's kind of a, kind of on the lower end of square footage, especially when you consider population served. Next one, Jason. You can see the budget. Budget's fairly low. It's not the lowest, but it's fairly low. Continue. These are some of the peer comparisons, and I should point out, these are 2021 data. So I found this really interesting. The place that South Pasadena is really hitting it out of the park and, you know, just doing way above its weight class is circulation of materials. It's got a large collection, and that collection circulates very frequently. And this came up, you know, during surveys and conversations with people too. People really appreciate the books at the library, and it shows in the utilization. Next slide, Jason. So then this is some areas where the numbers were a little bit lower. It is important to note that this is the height of COVID. And so the comparisons are always going to be a little skewed from that during these years. It'll be nice when we get further out from COVID and things get more normalized, but I do think it's important to point that out. So you see not as many programs as some of the peers, and then the number of internet terminals is also quite lower. And I think, you know, if you, yes, COVID also drove those numbers down. You have things like to do social distancing. You're not putting computers as close to each other, so you have less internet terminals available, things like that. But then I also look at the square footage discussion we showed earlier, and, you know, how much and how large the collection is. And so clearly, collections are, are being prioritized in the space. Next slide. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, JR. And I'm gonna just cover a couple of key highlights on the, the interviews and the input. And JR already gave you some of the information as far as some of the highlights is when we talked about the environmental scan earlier. But I just want to highlight a little bit more of our findings and, and sort of build up to the themes out of everything we heard. Kind of where do we go with that information? How do we get to our themes? But we tried to, you know, cast a pretty wide net and connecting diverse areas of the community, from businesses to different stakeholders, to patrons and staff. And, and as JR pointed out earlier, in fact, South Pasadena does have the highest numbers of surveys ever taken that we've taken than we've seen through similar process with over 400 participants. It's, it's really important, and it's really kind of interesting because getting individuals to maybe place a comment is one thing, but to actually complete a full survey is, you know, takes a little bit more time. And I think there again, it just showcases the, the efforts of staff and really getting the community involved in the planning process. Also, a couple other visuals here, and you've probably seen these already. But what you're seeing in the background here is an example, the social pinpoint site, and some of the ways that individuals interact with it. But things such as comment cards in different language, as well as a bookmark. And the bookmark idea was a staff idea from, from, from your library, in fact. And we were really happy to help produce that to, as, as, as folks checked out materials, they were reminded with bookmarks to please get engaged with the library planning process, which I think certainly made a difference. And when we look at the amount of people that participated in things like the survey. We also conducted, as, you know, sure you're aware of, of course, the Community Task Force and Staff Meetings. And there again, we continued to use the task force and staff as a sounding board as another step of really understanding. Are we, are we all hitting the mark? Are we going down the right path? Are we, are we, you know, sort of checking our findings? So it's sort of, you know, listening, you know, collecting and articulating what we heard and kind of testing what we heard to see, to see if we were accurate or not. And of course, we're doing that again here with, with you this evening. So with that, we have pages and pages and pages of findings. And I believe you have a copy of all the engagement findings. And certainly, we're always happy to share that information. But we did our best job as a team to put together what are the most common themes or most frequent input that we heard from all the engagements? And mind you, this is from comment cards, the vision boards, the social pinpoint, the community stakeholder meetings, the one-on-one sessions. This is everything. We took everything we heard, and we, we analyzed the, how many times the themes were mentioned, the depth of the themes and those areas, and sort of came up with these, which include tier one. And why we're calling them tier one is that this tier are themes that are areas of, 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 of feedback that were most commonly mentioned in all of the engagement areas. So we have addressing facility needs of the library, prioritizing safety, as well as expanding programs, events, and hours. As sort of the top three most frequent input received in all of our engagement efforts. Then we also have here tier two themes, which is fairly frequent, maybe not quite as frequent as tier one, but nonetheless fairly frequent. And this includes increasing technology, growing your collection, as well as a lot of feedback on COVID-19 impacts. That could be everything from individuals using the library less or using the library more, but in different ways. Maybe before they were a library patron that came to the library and spent some time researching and checking out, you know, material. Whereas now they might have an on-call where they just stop, stop by just to pick up the books and leave, that sort of thing. We had a lot of discussion about COVID-19 impacts. And finally, another tier, which is equally important, but nonetheless, not quite as common as the other themes. But there was enough mentioned here that we wanted to make sure we communicated it to our findings. And that is the, the fact that your, your library is in a great location. And what do I mean by that? I mean that your community expressed to us how much they appreciate where the library is located. When, you know, a lot of communities talk about, you know, other locations or, you know, different, different opportunities and things. But we did hear clearly from your community how much your library is sort of a icon and a beacon of bringing the community together and such a great resource. I will also comment and say, your library is just absolutely one of the most beautiful libraries I've seen. So I can kind of see that and how important it is to the, to the neighborhood. Also, it's important to mention, there are barriers to exist. I'm sorry, barriers do exist to accessing library services. And we've researched, you know, what are those most common barriers? And we believe that folding into the work plan and the goals and that sort of, those areas will be able to begin to address some of those barriers for your patrons accessing services. And I'm going to turn it over to Monique.
Thank you. And so we're back at the process and timeline. So we've gone through the community and the engagement aspect of our, of our, you know, of our process. And we decided to, we would next delve into the roles, library, mission, and vision, and then also looking at how we would put this plan into action, because this is definitely not a staff nor a plan that is going to sit on the shelf. Next slide, Jason. So based on the input that we had from both the staff and the community, it became obvious that there were roles that were specific that people felt strongly about in terms of the library. And the first is community, as a community anchor, as a welcoming and inviting place for everyone in the community. And we heard time and time again how it's a place where new residents go to spend time to learn about South Pasadena. It's a place where people come when they need answers to different questions that will benefit their lives. And it's really seen also because of its location, seen as a center for, for the community. And then the second role that really emerged was as a resource and learning hub. The community values learning and education. The participation from the teens alone made that obvious to us. They were very engaged and wanted to understand how to make their life, you know, how to make the library better as it related to them and their school needs and their leisure needs. But we can certainly see that this is a lifelong learning destination for the entire community. Next slide. So the draft mission statement that was developed with the staff and the, you know, the community as well. We took various phrases that emerged repeatedly. We looked at ways to put them together. And then Kathy and her team came up with this draft mission statement. The South Pasadena Public Library is a welcoming place focused on providing resources and programs that meet the evolving and diverse needs of the community. Okay, next slide. So first of all, I have to say, your staff was very much in line with what the community wants and needs. A lot of what we heard, we heard over and over again, but from all different corners of the community. So as a former library director, it was great to know that, that your South Pasadena staff knows their community so well. And so what, one of the things that we wanted to know was, in these various roles that all fit up into, you know, being a community hub and being a learning center, you know, using those words interchangeably, how are we set? How are we prepared to meet those needs going forward in this plan? And so the staff took a look at the roles and then the four areas of resource, the facilities, the technology, collections, and staffing, and, and rated them, you know, on how well they thought the library is positioned to carry out these different roles. So you can see here that, for example, gathering space, based on the current state of the facilities as a resource, it was rated very fairly low as being able to meet that need at the moment. Technology also plays a factor in that. The collections, as we've seen before, really are the star. There's a, there's a very, a high level of confidence that the collections can help the staff achieve whatever it is they, they want to go forward and do. And staffing, again, there is a critical impact to the staff and being able to take, take action on some of the roles. So this is kind of, this is an interesting guide, and, and you may want to come back to it as a team later and look at, well, how did we come to these decisions? We looked at a lot of the resource readiness as a way to inspire or help us form the activities and actions that would go along with the plan and helping to meet, helping to meet the goals set by the library. All right. So using those, the resource readiness data, we came to looking at what are the highest priority goals and tasks that the library wants to work on in these areas? And how can we have, Phase one is, I think of it as things that are very urgent and also things that where we can probably make some progress in a reasonably short amount of time. And so these are the goals and tasks. I'm not going to read them all, but I'm sure you are familiar with many of the subjects. And if, at the end, if you have questions about anything, we'll be happy to answer them. Okay, next slide. So Phase two, still a priority of activities, but may require that the library do some pre-work or planning or have some of the Phase one activities accomplished before they move on to Phase two. Okay, next slide. And we also created another way to look at this so that you can see all of the operations-related activities in one section, but then know whether they were Phase one or Phase two activities. Next slide. Same with services. Next slide. Facility. Next slide. And technology. Okay.
Thank you, Monique. And I realize we went through some of those, you know, fairly quickly, and certainly some of this information you're seeing for the first time. So I definitely want to have plenty of time to go back to discuss any specifics about any of the areas we covered. Talk about any, you know, highlights or other types of, any, anything that's on your mind. But I think what I, what I do want to kind of restate is that this was a really inclusive process from staff as well as the community. When we talk about creating those goals and creating the, you know, the tasks and aligning them, whether they should be a Phase one or Phase two, and, you know, kind of how quickly we can get things done. I mean, certainly, there's the thought from staff that works so hard for the community. They want to do everything now. But there's also the reality to say, you know, we've been charged with a five-year plan, you know? And we weren't necessarily thinking, of course, that or asking for everything to be done in year one. So we certainly had to challenge, you know, the team quite a bit to say, well, what's, what's, what's really realistic? And what, what makes sense? And what is aligned with your sort of processes? And, and, and what, what, what really is, is, is linking well to your community, to your organization? So just wanted to kind of stress that again. But where do we go from here? So from here, we are going next to performance measures. And so the goals that you've seen and the tasks that you've seen in the previous slides, we are helping the team to develop performance measures. And we do that because we want to make sure that the plans that we produce and are ones that are actionable. And so how are we measuring the, you know, the success of those goals? And certainly, for Kathy, it's important for her as a leader of the library and her team to make sure that they're hitting their, their marks and developing those metrics. We will be creating the draft plan document to review with the team, and then, of course, the, the final document. Beyond that, we will, we really look forward to celebrating eventually, because of course, we have more steps. But eventually, celebrating that with the community with the presentation of the, of the Because of course we have more steps, but eventually celebrating that with the community with the presentation of the, of the final plan. But an additional thing that we do is that we work as our consultant team with, with your team and what we call implementation workshop. And sort of one of the things that we do for communities, once we're done with the planning and it's completed, we then work with staff to make sure their work plans and, and those types of efforts are really aligned as best as possible. So at least that next year to eighteen months is, is kicked off well and is, and is ready as it can be to move forward. So with that, I will be happy to go back to any slide that you'd like and turn it back over to Kathy to see if she wanted to highlight anything else and/or facilitate questions.
Yeah, I would say a few things. So, you know, coming out of the last staff session where we were trying to get down to the roles of the library, there were maybe like four things that we were seeing. And we ended up with two because it just, it just made sense and it simplified things. So that's how we got to the two main roles, which is the community hub and the learning resource center. I don't know if that, their exact names. And then in terms of the phasing, you know, some strategic plans are very specific about, you know, quarter one of the first year, you're going to do this. And we just didn't feel that that was probably a good approach for us. So we really wanted it. Like a lot of these things are going to stretch across multiple years. So that's why we really only broke it into kind of two phases of, of, of process. And, and I think, I mean, all of it is important. So it's really hard to, you know, like you said, the staff had everything in the first phase. And that's just not feasible. So, but we did try to leave it sort of broad so that we're not too operationally tied to, you know, an artificial deadline that is, is, is difficult to meet. So I think that this gives us a lot of flexibility to work on some of the big issues that came out, which are definitely the facility. And I, I think that this is going to be an actionable plan, the way that it's written. And I'm assuming you guys might like to go back and look at those goals a little more closely so that you can read.
I, I think it would be very helpful to start at the beginning because I know I had questions, but I didn't want to interrupt as, as the, as the presentation was unfolding. But Kathy, I would note that our city strategic plan has specific quarter metrics and it would not at all surprise me if Arminay looks at this and says, we need something more specific because without at least some degree of specificity. And as, as you may know, with the city strategic plan, we have moved things around as we've needed to, but without the specificity of a particular date, at least an anticipated commencement date, I'm afraid there's going to be a perception that there's a lack of accountability. And particularly when you're only looking at a five-year window for this plan, that's pretty short. And you know how long it takes the city to do anything. So I think it is counterproductive, counterproductive to not include at least an anticipated start date and anticipated completion date with the acknowledgement that those dates may necessarily move depending upon what things happen, like a pandemic or something else.
I, I think that makes some sense. And I think that if I'm not mistaken, some of the performance measures will also put some timing into it. So if the, if the, if the task is to conduct a facilities needs assessment, then the performance measure is by quarter one contact consultant or, you know, you know, so, so yes, we can, I think we'll see more specificity as we look at the performance piece and the measures, but we can also look at it at a higher level and just say, you know, we're going to, first year we'll put dates with it. We can certainly, you know, make an effort to do that.
I think it would be helpful because, you know, Arminay is about accountability. And without some specificity, even if it's relatively big specificity, I'm afraid it's not going to be favorably received.
Okay. And we'll obviously show, you know, we'll be going over this with her so we can get her input too. So you want to go all the way back to the very beginning and ask questions throughout?
Wouldn't hurt. If we had an advanced opportunity, but without that, I think we should go back.
But I don't see how we get through our whole meeting and do the other thing. We, we review all this ourselves and then come back with our questions.
Are we, can, can we get either a printed copy or a virtual, yeah? And then I think maybe we could study it and then come back. How does that?
It depends what's in their budget for the number of meetings that they have with you.
Well, I, I, you know.
We could just submit questions.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you, I can facilitate communication to them if they're not able to meet with us.
I can, I could respond to that.
I mean, I don't think we'll have questions on each slide.
We might want to think about what we've just seen.
I just had a question on one of the slides about the, when the staff was analyzing how, how plus or negative each, you know, facilities and what was the range?
So, yeah, that's twenty-five. So what that is, is it's literally counting each person's vote. So if, if I said that the facility for a gathering space, we were at negative four readiness, that gets added to somebody else's plus two, somebody else's minus one.
The maximum and minimum.
Do you remind me, you guys, what, how many?
I'd be happy to take this. Thank you. Great question. And so what we do is we ask staff to simply rank as a plus or minus, do they believe, as an individual, do they believe that if we're looking at the role of a place to recharge, is a facility ready for that? And staff can say, yes, it is, or no, it isn't. And, and it's really as simple as that. Now, now we could say, well, you know, why would we assess it that way? Well, just based on our experience with library systems is that it really is important to, to, to get staff's input and their assessment of whether or not we're, we're ready to move on these things. So it's sort of a test, if you will, to see, you know, and, and it will, and it does influence the goal setting and certainly back to the metrics and accountability, it influences heavily. For instance, if the negative twenty-seven gathering space is, I think, the least, the lowest, the least prepared, let's just say that way, it might be difficult to say, yeah, we're ready to roll in the facility being a gathering space until we work more than that. So this is an aggregate of sort of everything from a plus or minus from all staff. We had an all-staff session with Kathy and the entire team. And this is their overall rankings of, of each, each, each area.
So that means in the gathering space, that means twenty-seven people said no?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Out, out of twenty-seven, out of twenty-seven?
No, out of thirty-five, thirty.
My memory JR is that we could, we had like double negative.
Yeah. So the ranges you could either, for voting, you either got to put a three, two or one if it was positive, or you could put a negative one, negative two, negative three. And so those were the ranges, is negative three to positive three. And then.
I think it would be really helpful if you could provide just a paragraph describing the methodology that was utilized in developing this table because it really is confusing. I, I don't understand what staffing means with regard to place to recharge or community center. I don't know how to interpret that.
I guess to have enough staff to make that happen? To provide an environment.
I mean, there isn't always a perfect nexus, but the challenge for us was to say, you know, this is what people want from the library. And then in these areas, how ready are we to meet those goals? And sometimes, yeah, they, they don't, you know, staffing may not have to do with state space or staffing may not have to do with something. So it was a little awkward and, and yeah, I mean, it's definitely not a hard science, but it gives you a sense of where we feel least prepared and where we feel most prepared. Yeah.
Yeah, that would be helpful to have maybe a, a little paragraph about how, what this, what we're looking at. And was there, is, was there any, then, can you remember any specifics that you want, as opposed to going over every slide? We could just go around.
I, I was wondering if there was any, if there was a crosswalk done between the demographics that were identified in our, in our map, five minute, ten minutes with the actual population reflected in our library cardholders. Because that should be a database that we should be able relatively easily figure out.
The community task force asked me to, for the breakdown of where cardholders were, and I gave them that, but we have not overlapped that with the, with the, the drive time.
And wouldn't we need to factor in, in those areas? I mean, it includes Pasadena, it includes another area that have libraries. So I don't know if we'd be drawing on those people anyway, because why would they come here? They have a library down the street.
I think the drive time, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it, I think just to give people a sense that we are serving a community outside our own immediate community. And that there's easy access, but which we already know in Southern California that everybody's using everybody else's libraries. But it is sort of striking to see it and realize that in this, you know, really relatively close to us, it's, it's fifty thousand people. Not just our little twenty-five thousand in our, in our town.
What I've, and I've always, I've always known that South Pasadena is a drive-through. So people come into South Pasadena, drive through to do other things and then probably stop, make, make it, you know, where they do like the, a library errand, another errand and another errand. Because we're, we have major thoroughfares.
I had another question, how the benchmark libraries were selected? Because with the exception of San Marino, the other cities are at least twice, if not larger than us, twice the size.
I'd like to say something about the data, that, that data, for example, I noticed in the, in the programs list, you know, that Monterey Park says they have six hundred and fifty-four programs. All that data is self-reported. And we are supposed to be following very specific scope notes about what those pieces mean. But I know over here, whenever you see an outlier like that, I am pretty sure they are not following the, the definition of what they're supposed to be reporting. Even us this year, we had been counting, you know, when we do outreach like a farmer's market as a program, that doesn't count as a program. And that's not a number that gets reported to the state. So I think with some of that data is, it, it's helpful and it's good to have it. But if you see anything that's a real outlier, I think it's best to disregard.
I mean, that's like more than one program. That's like two programs.
They're counting something else. Can you guys go back to that slide with, yeah, the programs with the other libraries?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, yeah.
I mean, it means nothing to see numbers.
Which is comparable to us in your view of knowing the libraries?
I mean, it's hard because there's different, you know, are you talking about comparable in terms of population? Then we're more like Redondo Beach. Are we talking about similar in terms of, you know, the facility and what people need from us? It's, it's a little bit hard to say. As far as how these particular ones were selected, can you guys speak to the, the choice of the ones that you chose to compare us to?
Yeah. And by the way, Redondo Beach has a population of sixty-six thousand. So it's more than double.
In, in two and a half times.
What's interesting, they both are the lowest South Pasadena, but they both have the highest circulation, like Redondo was first off. So, and they're not doing, they're not doing very many programs either then. It's educational.
So, yeah.
I'd love to hear from Barry Dunn too, just your, how these program numbers like compare when you do these kinds of analyses too.
Yeah. And, and you know, it's Jason, I, one thing that's always interesting about benchmarking because we do these types of benchmarks for all sorts of organizations and, and very common. The, the first reaction is, well, how we, you know, why we don't fit into those and, you know, that city is different. And I totally get, I, I completely understand where, where that's coming from. This is your community. You live there. You understand it way better than I, than I certainly ever would. But what we do enjoy about benchmarking is that it creates some really great conversation, most notably with staff. Once, once you, you can take benchmarking in some of these numbers and link that to say, okay, there, there's, there's some examples of benchmarking, but what is our community really saying about our programs? What is our community really saying about our, our technology needs? And, and using that as, as sort of a talking? We, we don't ever recommend a library or an organization to say, hey, we, we need to compare ourselves to one, you know, we need to shoot for six hundred and thirty-four programs. That may make absolutely no sense for, for, for your community. It's just a, a, you know, a different way of, of looking at it. But as far as how, so, so the one good thing, and Kathy talked about it already, is that these, these organizations are required to provide this information now. How they're providing it, how they're utilizing their data, obviously it's a little subjective, if you will. But nonetheless, it is good data to use. That's sort of the common data that's there. JR or Monique, please, as far as the specifics as to the comparables, you know, the rankings and, and the size and why these particular libraries were selected, could you please speak to that?
Yeah. So some of these libraries, I think Kathy hit the nail on the head earlier about like there, there's commonalities with different, different metrics, proximity, size of community, is it a similar type of community? So those, there's a whole, there's a whole range of it that goes into why they were selected. And then in terms of the comparisons though, I think it's also important to note, like all of the mitigating information that you just brought up about why peer community comparisons can be problematic. And really it's a point of conversation starting, or starting a conversation rather than the end all be all for why decisions are being made. So, yeah, so I think that's really where we're at with it. I can get into more detailed explanation of, of why specific communities were selected in this benchmarking analysis. But I'll need time to, you know, prepare like a detailed list of that.
And, and so what we will do is on any of these items that we're showing you in the slide deck tonight, we will have a supporting statements. I think that was mentioned earlier, which I think is great feedback. When we have the plan document, well, there'll be much more explanation as to, well, why did you pick these areas? Or what does that drive time really mean? Or, you know, getting better explanation about some of, some of those areas. One other thing, well, I'll pause just to make sure, Monique, did you have anything to add? And if not, that's okay. Because I, I had one more different point. Go, Monique, did you have something?
Sorry, my phone is, or my headset's going crazy. The only different thing I would say is that, and, and I'm sure you're familiar with this, when the state library does gather its results, it does put libraries into different categories. And so any of the, those may have emerged as contributing to the list. So we'd, we'd have to go back and take a look at that. But there are, you know, I know that the state library's statistics do divide libraries up, library jurisdictions based on primarily on population, but that's, there are all different ways to slice and dice that data as well. And like Kathy says, different libraries, even though you're given guidance on how to count certain things and different activities, not every library does it correctly or the same way.
And the last thing I would say, thank you, Monique. Just to, I'm sorry, did I hear a question there? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. You know, we were asked to do benchmarks as part, part of the planning process, which, which frankly is pretty common. Every organization kind of wants to get an idea on benchmarks. You know, at the same time, you, you know, you've sort of heard my statement earlier, which, which is to say, well, what do you even do with this? Because there's so many things like we just talked about that may not be a, you know, an adequate representation of your community. I agree, folks. I, I completely agree. And I would say this is interesting information, but definitely shouldn't be more important, let's say, than let's say the engagements or the other types of, of data that are, you know, overall in the planning effort. I have another comment about, just briefly, one more thing. There is, there is a, a mention earlier, right before this about the difference in, in, in communities. Uh, the difference in, in, in communities and maybe, maybe why do people in other communities, uh, and other cities come to your library? And in fact, we did ask that quite, we asked the question, if you go outside of your city to go to their library, why do you do that? And, and, and I hope you have that in your engagement findings, I think you do, but we, we definitely want to ask, we did, we wanted to learn that and what we. Did learn from at least our engagements was, there are reasons why people go to your library and for example. A- a- and may choose to go even from their library that they're closer to, to go to your library. And the reason that might be, at least from our engagement findings are in fact staff. There was a lot of comments about staff and staff's resourcefulness and their ability to answer and help them in certain ways that maybe they don't get at their other library. And of course, another one is collections and, and, and how well you keep up your collection and opportunities to continue to grow that. That they might not see at their local library. And of course, I think as Monique already pointed out, uh, or, or JR, I can't recall, was about. The, the idea of shared libraries in California being such a great asset. So folks, you know, go to various libraries for whatever particular need they have. I'm sorry Kathy, did I cut you off earlier?
No, I was just gonna mention to these guys so that they know that I, we have access to the data for all the libraries in the state. So if there is a community that you want to know more about, and, and like Monique said, the state tries to make. Sort of reporting on the data easy, so they group, they put libraries into groups based on whatever they think makes a smart grouping. You know, that, that, so, so like you can go to the dashboard and, and just look at you, your, your comparison with the other libraries that they think. Might be in your group. So that might be where some of these came from, but we at any time can look at the data from any library in the state, so.
Kathy, Kathy, one more comment from me, um, folks, th- this, this planning effort is, we care very much about your success. And, uh, as far as, I think the comment was, you know, can we, i- if the opportunity Kathy from you or the team was to request that we come back. Uh, if that timeframe works for you, I just want to be clear from, from us, absolutely, we want to do everything we can. To make sure this plan is as best representing your community needs, uh, as best as possible.
Thank you, thank you. Any other, just on the top of your heads, any pressing concerns? Well, then I think, uh, yeah, it would be nice if we could get either, uh, hard copies or, you know, uh, you know, virtual copies of it. That we could then review and then if we have any questions, we can email the question, but you want to be the point person, Kathy?
Yeah.
Again, Kathy can be the point.
Yeah, we can maybe, you maybe send me questions and then so that we can prepare, yeah, prepare to have a second discussion.
Okay.
Um, and just so you know, I've already shared the engagement results with you, but they are, um, available on the website. So I'll resend you that link if you want to go to those again. The only thing that you haven't seen that I'm not quite ready to share is the, the. Comments, we have over a thousand comments, um, and so I've been through those one by one, um, as have the team, I'm assuming. Um, so I want to work with those a little bit and try to make that a little more manageable and give you some sense of, of what those look like. But I think it was, it's really important to look at those, um, so that's not quite ready for me to share with you, but.
I'm right, working on it, yeah, and, um, uh, Annie and FJ, are you okay then with that? If we can get this, we can look at it. Ourselves and then we can just email questions and concerns directly to Kathy.
Yes, thanks Bianca, yes.
Yes, thanks for checking.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Is the survey on the website? Is that what you mean by the engagement? We get the results of the, yeah, everything, anything, they, it's, it's the slides they presented when they were here in September to. Tell everyone what they had learned from the interviews and the survey and the meetings with the teams and the staff. So, yeah, that's all put together in one, uh, powerful, or PDF. So if you guys have no more questions for Barry Dunn, we'll, we'll thank them and, yeah, let them go.
Thank you for.
Thank you so much.
Very eye opening.
In behalf of our team, I won't have them all sign off or say goodbye, but I'll say goodbye in behalf of our team. We, we so greatly appreciate the opportunity to work with you and your community. We've, we've, we, we've genuinely enjoyed every minute of it and I, I, I was really, uh, just, uh, you know. Frankly inspired by how much interaction it was tonight and, and, and the additional interest of follow-up, we don't always get that. And so I think it's great and, uh, uh, again, to have the opportunity to come back and provide, you know, uh, more information and making sure we're. Creating a plan as best as possible, we appreciate that. So with that, you guys have a great night. Thank you so much for, for taking the time and, and giving us some great feedback. Take care.
Great, thanks Jason.
Good night, thank you. Okay. And I can honestly send you the cardholder breakdown if you're interested in that.
Right.
We'll, we'll back to our, uh, agenda items and then, uh. I just, uh, did everybody get a chance, uh, we're on action discussion, I'm number three, the minutes, did everybody get a chance to look over the minutes and do I have? A motion to approve of the minutes and that, remember everybody, the special August thirty-first meeting was the one about the, um. The gift, the gift that the, the library board of trustees received. So can I get a? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, the minutes for the August thirty-first have been moved and approved. How about we do both?
Yes.
Yeah, so do, um, and everybody, let's go, we'll combine three and four, so the, the September eighth. Did everybody get a chance to look over those? And again, Sean, thank you, you do a wonderful job of the minute.
Yeah, that's a hard job.
Yeah. Any comments or concerns? Alright, can I get a motion to approve of the September eighth?
So I'll amend my earlier motion to approve items three and four, the minutes for August thirty-one and September eight.
And Annie, you want to go ahead and amend yours that you'll approve both? Okay. On for items, we're gonna combine items three and four of, approving of the minutes.
Sure, uh, Bianca Richards?
Yes.
Kenneth Gross?
Yes.
FJ Pratt?
Yes.
Annie Chang Long?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, and then going on to item number five, um, the library special tax report and that's, hopefully you guys got a chance to look at it. That was, yeah, very interesting, very interesting, so, um.
Yeah, we, that's just informational, there's, there's not much to say, but you, you know, we, we saw a big jump this year because of the consumer price index. So, um, I think that the budget that, that was adopted by council was, I think, three hundred and sixty thousand, but we're. Hopefully we're getting closer to three ninety, so that was just amended, um, by the finance department, so. Yeah, so if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but it's really just informational and, and then the city council will have a familiar report. Next Wednesday.
And the actual adjustments to the budget will take place at the mid-year review, which is anticipated to occur. In January or February of next year.
So, so what does that mean? Do we, does our budget get up because of inflation?
No, 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 it, I mean, it just means that a, a bigger percentage of our total budget is coming from the parcel tax. Yeah, you know, and, you know, our budget is one point eight million and now three ninety of it is coming.
But it wouldn't hurt to ask, yeah, when we, I would strongly suggest asking and view the additional revenues. Here's how we'd like to spend the money. And if you do that by, on an agenda item by December seventh, I'd be happy to champion that for you.
Thank you.
Do you have any things in mind?
Well, I mean, because we're in the middle of the strategic planning process, like that's where our, our, kind of. What we're gonna want to ask for is gonna come from and there are some staffing needs, um, so now I would have to think about that a little bit more.
Yeah, wanna think about it, you know, maybe staff OT or something even.
This was a, this was a really good, this was good, who put this, who put this report together, did?
Which the, the, the actual.
Yeah.
That is NBS, um, the consultant that, right, and we hired, um, this is their second year, we extended. We did an amendment to their contract to use them again and I, and I'm very happy with them, so. Very. We'll enter into a new agreement with them.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, it was easy to read, you know, was.
Yeah.
Very simple.
Thank Kathy, because the consultants that prepared the prior reports were not as careful as these folks.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get this and I, I don't have to go and do all the math myself to see if it's, yeah, right. I'm pretty, I do a little bit, but I, but they do a great job.
I was interested to find out how many units we have, like a three thousand square feet, and, you know, it takes only forty dollars for two thousand square feet. I thought, well, how many units do we have? Yeah, so. Yeah, about half and half, you know, um, single family home and then. What else? Oh, multi-family.
And not really that many huge.
No, no. Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, it's valuable information to have on hand.
Yeah, this is, so thank you and, and tell that consultant, thank you.
Can we add an item for the, can we add an item for the next agenda Kathy to, is it to, will you be able to bring back some ideas? At the November meeting of potential ways to. Things to add to the budget for next year, I would really love to take advantage of the opportunity and not.
For next year?
Or for whenever we expect to see this increase, I guess.
Okay.
To make sure that our expenses go up with it, yeah.
Good, good catch, Annie, thank you.
Although I do have some questions about the budget, so I don't, yeah, maybe they're tied together.
Now, do, we don't have to, this was just a, uh, a discussion, I, yeah, we, do we have to, we don't have to know anything on it, okay, so. Alright, and then the quarterly budget update, number six.
Yeah, so again, informational, there's, you know, we're still fairly early in the year, everything is on track, there's no. Line item where we're, that I see that gives me any pause at this point, um. Definitely, you know, we're, we're using our part-time budget, we've had a full-time vacancy, so, um, we'll have to keep an eye on that closely as we go. Through the year, make sure that we're not going over, but, um, like Diana said, maybe that's a place where we need a little more help. Um, and we, we go to the city and ask for a little bit more help in that, but I, I think we're, we're pretty much on track. So I don't have much to report here unless you have questions, if things popped out at you, um, that you're curious about.
Yeah, I, I had some line item questions about a couple of things, one, um, professional service is near the bottom of page one. Is that Barry Dunn, is that what comes, is that?
Professional services, I mean, pretty much with me, professional services is, um, the NBS parcel tax consultant. Um, there's a little bit of funding in there for like crack and design help, um, what else is in professional services?
What is Barry Dunn?
Barry Dunn, it, it's, that, yeah, that rolled over, so it's not showing here, but.
It, it's not contract services? No, I got a seventy-two thousand dollar budget for.
Yeah, that's contract services is all of our big ticket items like our, our, um, our system, our integrated library system. It's our, um, our cataloging consultancy, it's our Baker Taylor purchasing platform. Um, what else is under contract services? Some, there's a bunch of big ticket items under contract services, so it's under professional services. I'll have to talk to finance because we, we did the process at the end of last year to roll. The money that had been budgeted the prior year to pay for Perry Dunn this year, so I'll have to see where that is and why that's not.
What, what's board commission?
That's funds that, um, are under, that, that are for your surf uses, so for example, we might buy your memberships. To the California Library Association out of that, but we also use it for the, um, annual, uh, volunteer recognition event. So that's mostly, that's where it goes.
Annie, did you have any questions?
Yeah, if, um, can I have, can I have, was there anything else that you want to ask?
No, no, it's, I'm sorry.
Um, I was curious why equipment maintenance and building maintenance was so low as a percentage expended, um, spent.
Yeah, so both, both equipment and building maintenance have sort of, um, it's like an emergency bond a little bit. So we, if we don't have to use it, we don't use it, so it's if the elevator breaks and we need to have funds to pay for that. So the fact that it is not much spent just means that we haven't had a lot of building and equipment problems that need to be fixed.
I don't think maybe it's, it's not much budget, is that what you meant?
Oh, sorry, did I misunderstand your question, Annie?
No, I meant spent, sorry, yeah, that's what you answered, yeah.
Okay, but it is not a whole lot budgeted, that's interesting, three thousand for equipment maintenance.
Well, so this, it's actually, um, we lowered building maintenance this year compared to last year. Because we weren't spending it and so we lowered that in order to get some funds, I think, into ebooks or something, um. You know, obviously if something in the building goes awry, the city is going to have to make an adjustment at the mid-year to, to cover that cost. And the public works has funds in their budgets for various repairs, so, you know, something, something happens that's catastrophic. We'll just have to figure that out, this is, um, you know, things like, um. A, a little kid threw up in the, in the children's room and we need to have the carpet specially cleaned and disinfected or. Um, you know, sort of special needs things, but not huge big ticket items, um, those are things that we would be then talking to public works about. What to, what to do about those things.
And it like. Be some carryover between building maintenance and at the very bottom, bottom buildings and improvements.
So buildings and improvements is in, that's under the capital improvement line, so, or, you know, the capital items line versus maintenance and operations. Um, so buildings and improvements, the funding that we have for that is for, um, the new workstations in the support services area. It's for, um, potentially, um, we'll talk about it when we get to the public works list, but, um, HVAC in the admin office. It doesn't have any climate control, um, it's, uh, new tables and benches for the patio. So those are sort of bigger ticket kind of capital items under that building improvements.
I, I'm not as familiar with city financial statements, but do we have a balance sheet? Do you know, mayor, like, or, um, do we have, like, I mean, some of those things typically in, in a business would get capitalized? You know, like if you were to.
There is a city budget and the, um, account numbers that you see here. I, I think it's the last eight digits, but really the last functionally four digits correspond to other categories. Um, that are utilized by other departments. And so the first, I don't know if it's the first three or the first, um, seven. Or, no, it'd be eight, ten and eight, eleven, then pertaining to the library, that's all library and then everything else that you see. Those same categories are utilized by all the city departments.
And the council gets budget updates?
We, we're starting to, um, we just received the one. That our finance director provided at our last council meeting that showed where there's some adjustments to anticipated revenue. And anticipated expenses, um, but there won't be anything comprehensive until a mid-year and at that point. And, and so what we received was just informational, no actual changes to the budget will occur until this January or February. And I would guess it would be more likely February before any actual changes are authorized to the budget. But yes, this, the information here, at least in terms of the budget, should track what the city council. Approved in June for the library department in the city budget.
Okay, thank you so much, it's so helpful to hear the greater, you know, the bigger things that this is tied to. Uh, I just have one other item I was curious about was the retirement, I think you've told us this before Kathy, but how come the. That one happens faster, like, why is that a seventy-three percent?
They make a, there's a big lump sum payment that they make early in the fifth year. I think we, you asked that last year and we got an answer on that, so not you specifically, but the board asked that last year.
Yeah, thank you.
It's all, yeah, we talked about it more, so that's why that's like that, it's not that we're overspent, it's just that they, they make, uh, big chunk payment early in the first year.
And also, and I would hope this is partly reflected in that, the city, um, received and offered. To assign some anticipated revenue from existing telecom leases. And we used, we, we, um, referred the question of how to use, it was four point something million dollars. Um, we referred that question to the finance commission, finance commission recommended that we use, um, that money to pay down. Our first liability, we had some other funds and reserves that we, um, also used to establish a trust. For other post, it's called OPEB, other post-employment benefits, um, that we also paid down. And so I don't know, a- and. um, that we also paid down, and so I don't know, a- and so as a result of that pay down, which should have occurred by now, it's possible that some of that is reflected in, in this, but I don't know.
Any other questions? Uh, I just, I just have one question based on just my experience in, uh, public education. Like, at, you know, at the end of the year, we have to spend the funds, you know, or we lose them. Does that, does that happen? Like, so, and then you gotta kind of keep track of that, like.
Yeah, we try to spend consistently throughout the year, so I don't end up in that situation, but, um, sometimes there are projects that, you know, take a long time, and then you do find yourself at the end of the year rushing to get them finished, um.
And what, when it, when is that time where like, um, because I know like in, in, when I, where I used to work, our supervisor would like say, okay, in one month you have to spend this money, and we just never, it was.
We usually start to, I mean, again, we keep, we keep watch on this every month and see where we are, so we probably in April, I would ask staff, I would look and say, you guys need to pick up your spending, you're, you know, especially with the books and materials. I mean, our, our budget, we don't have that many, you know, things that we spend money on. The main things we spend money on are, are the books and the DVDs and the, the materials that we lend. So that's our main budget that we have to track really closely and we don't like to let any of that go to waste.
So about like in April, then you send out.
Okay, oh, look, we, you know, we do have a little extra money somewhere, and so those things that we were wishing that we could get, let's, I think we can do it, you know.
Well, and particularly for capital projects, I think within finance, there's more flexibility to carry over into the next fiscal year.
Yeah, it would drive me crazy where I, my last job.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna lose it by June thirty, spend it.
But it was like. Try not to do that, but we do, I mean, it, it, you know, at the end of the year, we sometimes do, we're, you know, we bought the TV, you know, we're able to get things that we wanted to get that we, you know, but by the end of the year, we're confident that we have the funds to do it, so.
And, which is awesome.
And I love this new setup, so, all right, so any other questions on the budget? So we'll move on. Thank you, Kathy. That's always good. Um, number seven, the library and library park health and safety updates.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up and let you know, and I'll pass you around, that we did, we do have new signage in production for the park. Um, so, the one sign, the, the single sign that has all the parks and rules and regulations that's on the El Centro side, we've made like six of those, so they're gonna be like at every entrance, and we're remaking that one, we made them green instead of blue, so that's just, um, the same one, and then this is the slightly smaller sign that will go on the balconies and the entrances and like the back senior center side door where there's that porch um, that has sort of just the high, you know, no staying in the park, no littering, no alcohol, no smoking, no graffiti, no vandals, and like the things that people tend to do and. So we'll have those where we can point to them, that will help, I think, with, um, maybe not so much with deterrence, but with enforcement, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wanted to give you that update, um.
These look nice, I like the green, and I like the green, love the green.
The green looks nice, it's like, it's more noticeable, and it's green.
That was Eddie's, Eddie's idea, Eddie, from, from the streets division, he said, oh, make it green, now the other park signs are green, I said, sure.
Eddie, oh, he's still here, wow.
Yeah, we've been a long time asking.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, and otherwise, um, not a lot of updates, um, you know, the, the city's mental health crisis team is, is functioning. They've added a component that is outreach to homeless people. Um, those folks are on site in the city on Fridays from one to four. I think the mayor's gonna bring them by tomorrow. Um, you know, just sort of slowly getting that pilot program up and running and trying to see if we can use it to make a difference with, with some of the people that we serve. Um, so that's really all I have on that, unless you have questions.
That's in addition to the Thursday.
About every Thursday, the mobile van is supposed to be.
Um, I, to be honest, I haven't paid that much attention to the mobile, the crisis, the mental health crisis unit, because we don't need that. So I don't, even now, I don't, off the top of my head, don't know when they're in town, maybe it is Thursday.
Yeah, that's.
Um, we had a really good, you know, we're having a quarterly social services meeting that, that brings people from all different departments and from different agencies across the county, and those are just really have been really good conversations to learn about, oh, Department of, LA County Department of Mental Health has this service that we didn't know about, or that sort of, so that has, that has been, um, I think productive, I think it's gonna lead to a better resource list of, you know, resources that, you know, right now, we've kind of hobbled together a list of resources and, um, we're not, it's not maintained consistently, so I think we'll see some improvements and I, that will help us to help people, so.
Well, and I noticed, like, I don't know, when you got, all came in tonight into the library, it was lovely to see so many, uh, families and children because of the farmer's market. But it's just, it's so nice to see so many people in the library park, uh, enjoying the library park and, yeah. And especially out, it's getting more crowded out on the Oxley side, you know, it used to be, the El Centro side was very crowded, now the Oxley side. So it's, it's just lovely to see it, so. Okay, number eight, um, facility improvement project update.
Yeah, so this was something you had asked for at the last meeting, um, you know, we have a lot of projects that involve public works and where we need cooperation with them to, to get them done. Um, some of the projects are things that are budgeted in the library's budget. Um, so they're maybe in some ways less on the radar for public works. And then there are some things that are in the CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Plan, and those are definitely on the radar for public works. So I had a really good meeting with, um, the director of public works, the deputy director, Katrina, who's the, um, I don't know what her exact title is, but she's.
Operations.
Operation manager, yeah, I'm saying to them, right, operations. Um, they still have a couple of vacancies that are impacting, you know, their ability to, to do some things. But we had a really good conversation about, first of all, this fiscal year, this first list of things, keyless entry on the staff entrance. So we would have, you know, key cards or something instead of, um, having the door unlocked or having key keys. Um, the issue of security cameras, we discussed. Uh, patio tables and chairs is something else that's in our budget that we discussed, because we can't do these things without them. Um, the admin o- office HVAC and the staff workstations, so just quickly updates on each of those. Um, antenna, the deputy director is working with the keyless entry vendor to try to get an updated quote. We have a quote from, I don't remember, maybe in the spring, um, and so he's working on getting that quote, so hopefully that will move forward. They've just hired a couple of new management analysts that will be able to help them do some of this contracting and, you know, checking the insurance and going through all of these kind of operational pieces that, that it's hard to do when, when you don't have enough staff. So that hopefully is moving forward. Um, the security cameras, I'll talk about when we talk about the next section, because they are, we're gonna discuss those in a, in a bigger picture, so I'll talk about those momentarily. The patio tables and chairs. Um, the plan for that is to actually outsource that installation, so they'll help, they'll help to find a vendor to do the installation for us. Um, so we need to work on getting those quotes because the quotes we have are at date, so we need new quotes. Um, the admin office, um, heating and, and cooling, I'll talk about that in the, in the next section as well. Um, and then the staff workstations are pretty straightforward. Um, they have not yet decided whether it's more efficient for them to do the work themselves, to put the workstations together and do the demo, or whether it's more efficient for them to hire someone to do it, it's sort of a half dozen of one and six of the other, because if they do it themselves, it's the, the maintenance guy's time, and if somebody hires somebody to do it, they have to do a contract and do an RFP and do all that stuff. So they're, they're committed to helping us get through these this year, so we will, um, plug away first on the keyless entry and try to get that accomplished. So under special projects, um, the biggest thing I really wanted to talk to them about was the infrastructure grant, because if we're gonna take advantage of that to, um, do some of these critical infrastructure improvements, which I think it would be, especially after the strategic plan and all the comments about the facility and, you know, the facility needs things, so, you know, so I really need them to help prepare for that application. So they're gonna schedule a meeting, you know, the public works now has a whole bunch of on-call professional services that they can call on to help, so bringing in someone with an engineering facility type background to help us um, look at these different projects that we would want to request the funding for and put together the cost and help us prepare that application, because I'm, I'm not, you know, I don't know what the cost are of these things. So that's, we had hoped to do that, Ted had hoped to do that before the end of October. I haven't heard whether that meeting will actually happen before the end of October, um, but that's, that's, I'm really happy because they're definitely on board and they understand the timeline and they know that we need their help to take advantage of this opportunity. Um, I was talking to some other library directors and they said, oh yeah, our public works department, they just, they were so excited, they took the whole thing on, you know, we didn't have anything to do with it, they knew what our building needed and they took advantage of the grant. So I'm happy to have just gotten to a point where, you know, they're able to help us get that application together. Um, so the, the things that are in that, that were, that are in that list, at least as of now, is replacing the fire alarm system and some electrical switch gear, which I don't know what that is, but it was in the facility's condition assessment report from twenty sixteen, saying that those were at the end of their useful life. Um, yeah, they were supposed to be, yeah, one was supposed to be, one was recommended for replacement in twenty seventeen and one was in twenty twenty. So those prices are gonna have gone way up, so we need to get a new assessment of that and, um, and so those are two pretty big ticket items, even according to twenty sixteen numbers, twenty, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand and a hundred and ten thousand. Um, it was, uh, remodeling the restrooms is really a high priority, that's coming out of the strategic plan too, and that's definitely from, you know, both the public and staff, it's, it's a problem. Um, so getting some idea of what that would cost and what that looks like will also be part of this person's, um, this consultant's job. Uh, we originally were just talking about doing like a backup, um, AC unit. But in fact, all of our AC units are failing, so if you were at the event last night and you were a little overheated.
Yeah.
Um, that is why, because they're telling us that that unit can't be repaired. Um, so, and all of the units are from twenty, two thousand seven, two thousand nine, like, none of them are new. So I, at this point, we're really all thinking that we should just go for replacing all of the units, um, and, and.
And it's only twenty-five and twelve thousand?
No, well, that was when we thought we were just doing. So we're now looking at, we have more than just a few little repairs.
Yes.
Um, so that's another cost that we need to, to look at, and as a reminder, this grant funding, which I think we would almost certainly get, it's a one-to-one match and the city has to come up with the other half. So anything that we propose, we have to, but that's why it's even more important to have a really well put together.
Grant, yeah.
You know, application and do the analysis of what, what we need and how much it would cost. Um, and then exterior lighting was the other thing that we, we wanted to ask for with this grant, so that's another thing. Um, both for the ADA ramp, but also just in general in the park, you know, we don't have downlight, we have, we don't have night sky friendly and they're not, they're actually just sort of like, they really don't light the, the ground very well.
No, no.
Yeah, so, um, new lighting would be really great. So those are the things we're thinking of, and then so as part of this conversation, Ted, the public works director, said, you know, we really should have this same person talk to us about the security cameras as well. We should, we should have that person help us think about what that project looks like and how much that costs and what, what, what are the parameters, and the same with the admin office HVAC. If we're gonna apply for this grant in March and get funding in June and replace the whole HVAC, well, we're not gonna spend ten thousand dollars now to replace this now. So that may just be something that doesn't happen, even though we got the funding to do it this year. I'm sure we can find something else to, to do with that money. Um, so that's the next big step, is having that meeting with this professional, um, in- engineer, facility engineer, I don't know, Ted will pick the, will figure out who the right consultant is to work with us. Um, and then I also just wanted to talk to them about the children's room expansion, because that's huge and, and that's gonna be something that, um, you know, we'll probably have to have a, a project manager coming in and come from, from the, from the professional services um, on-call folks, or I don't know how that will work, but I just wanted that to be kind of on their radar. So we talked a little bit about that, but also felt like we don't even have the money yet.
Right.
You can, let's just be aware of it and keep it in the back of your mind, but.
I vaguely recall an anticipation that we would receive the money sometime before the end of the year.
Yeah.
That it would take that long for the probate court to issue an order.
And the tenant is still there, so yeah, I haven't had any updates on that, I couldn't try to get, get an update from the city attorney to see what's happening. Um, and then the, the last thing on this list that I wanted to talk to them about, which we will also talk about with this consultant, is putting doors on the balconies so that people cannot get on the balconies. That was, um, the neighbor that made a public comment had brought up that suggestion, and I hadn't thought about it before. Wow, that's not true. I have thought about it before, um, but I, I, I think that, um, it's worth looking at. And so the consultant will help us look at that and see what that might look like and what that might cost.
What, what balconies? All the balconies?
This balcony.
You mean taking these, you're calling them, yeah, they're balconies.
Do you mean a gate instead of a door?
Um, you know, the gate, like, like a, not a solid door, but like the gate at the back of City Hall that goes into the fire department, you know, kind of like a wrought iron.
Right.
But see-through.
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah. Um, so it would still be an emergency egress. Somehow, we would have to, I mean, again, that's why we need someone to look at and see what would be possible, but, I mean, those balconies are just such a source of, you know.
Yeah.
Conflict all the time, that if, if there was a way to, um, make them inaccessible or less accessible, it might very well be worth doing it. So we'll look at that with that same consultant, yeah. So that's the part, that's the list.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot, and, but, but again, it was a really productive meeting and, and I, I appreciate their time. I know it was very hard to get all those people in a room and, and get them to sit down and go over all this without, um, so yeah, they're committed to helping us, it's just they're, they're strapped for staff and for time as well.
And I know you're gonna be doing all this, the application and everything, have you already been talking about having, um, management analysts for the library to manage a lot of these?
You mean, like, if we were to get the, if we were to get these, like, the grants.
Writing all this stuff, sounds like some other cities.
This city has a grant writer, she's busy, but we, we do have one, and my recollection is that to the extent that these are going to be, um, that these projects are gonna go through public works, it was anticipated that, that to the extent that the grant writer needed assistance, that some of that would come through the management assistance, because there's now two. We converted one engineering position, which I still have some apprehension about, um, to, eh, because we we're short of engineers too. Um, public works has just been short-staffed since I started with the city nine years ago.
Yeah, forever. Um, and they're still, the, the vacancy they have now really does impact us, it's the, it's the person under the operations manager who supervises parks and facilities, so the person that we would go to about.
Yeah, Katrina's back though.
Yeah, and so, so, yeah, so hopefully they'll get that filled. Um, and then the, I think the plan is to add another maintenance worker, so we'd have three maintenance workers. We've also not had an electrician for two and a half years, and so that has been posted, so we have electrical problems that we haven't been able to get resolved, um, because we don't have a city electrician.
And it's awful. I, I know HR has been really busy. Um, I, I think almost about a third of the employees in the city are new.
Yeah, I would say for sure.
Almost for sure.
Yeah.
Right, well, this is good.
Yeah, I just have a kind of a silly question though, like, when you close tonight, who, who does maintenance come in and, and service the bathrooms and clean that all up?
Yeah.
So that's a daily kind of mess?
Yeah, because the custodian.
I was in there today and it.
Was it bad?
Oh, it's bad, and even three teenage girls walk in and go, oh, gross.
Yeah, they, people have to tell us, because usually people let us know and then we try to address it. Um, we have nightly service and then three times during the week, we have a daytime custodian who comes, and I think he was here today. Um, yeah, I mean, we try to keep an eye on them, but usually people come and say, there's a problem in the bathroom.
Yeah, I mean, it's like the trash was overfilling, I think there may have been some stuff on the floor, but.
Yeah.
I'm sure you can't, I didn't know, if you had to clean it or who came in.
Well, in that, in that kind of situation, we would, during the day, staff would deal with whatever we have to deal with, and if it's, if it's too much to deal with, we lock it and open these.
Okay.
Oh, but they do clean.
It's just surprising how, how dirty people are. Well, it just really.
They're public mass, and so.
Yeah, I mean, it's five hundred people a day and there's like.
So, I couldn't hardly maneuver in that one.
Yeah.
It is that.
Right, well, thank you Kathy, so moving on to, you wanna do lo- library operations? Thank you, Kathy, so moving on to, you wanna do lo- library operations update then, number nine?
I'm, I didn't prepare very well for this, this whole week has been crazy with the big event last night and um payroll issues today, um what can I tell you, so we had um our kickoff of the series of the partnership we're doing with Spark to do author talks, um it's a series that's called Coffee Table Books Live, so they're focusing on um, you know, books that are related to either the visual or performing arts, so it was a great event, it was um a hundred and sixty people probably.
Yes.
Very well attended, um Bianca, thank you for your, Bianca was the gatekeeper, tacking people in and controlling the standbys. Um, but it was a great event, and I think uh the next one, which I think is sometime in February, will hopefully be a little bit smoother in terms of the processes going into it, um you know, we've done the first one and we've learned some things, I think. So that was great, um, let's see, the children's department, we're in the middle of story time through like mid-November and then they take a little break, um they did, we're just getting the children's scary story contest booklet published, so that should come from the, from the printer hopefully before Halloween. Um, and otherwise, we're just ticking along, you know, we have, the strategic planning has been taking a lot of time because the last time the consultants were here, um we generated all of these goals and tasks and then they gave us that in kind of the collated form, but Barbara and I spent a lot of time on those trying to both kind of paint them through, but also doing a lot of word sniffing and um trying to make sure they really capture what we thought we saw in the comments and and on all the engagement pieces, so um everybody's super busy, Alexis started, Alexis Mendoza is our new librarian, um she'll be introduced to city council next week. She's great, she's, it's her third week, she um staffed the booth at the business networking event on um yesterday morning, so she's had the opportunity to meet a lot of city staff, we had a citywide um what they call chat and chew, where we have lunch, we bring our lunches and we get to talk to other staff members from other departments, so we took, we took Alexis over there and so she got to meet a lot of people, so she's getting up and running, it's a lot to learn, um but luckily Cynthia left a lot of good resources behind to guide her, so that's great, but for me and I were thrilled because yeah, now we can, oh great, Alexis, yeah, do it now, instead of us. Um, so that's, that's it, I don't think I have any other, any other updates.
Well, but you can always, if you do, in communications, you can bring it up again. Okay, on to communications, um our board president's not here, and so just quickly, I'll just say, I've been going to the events and they've been wonderful, I went to this one, uh Jana Ireland.
Yeah.
It was, this was very in, this was very interesting, um that was very good. The Lelands was very good last night, and then uh the open house, I thought was, I thought it was very good.
Yeah, we were really busy.
Yeah, yeah, so um, yeah, a lot of, a lot of things going on, so and that, that would be my communication, so we'll just go around, Kenneth, do you have anything? Annie, do you have any communications?
Um, nothing specific, I'd say, you know, just always thankful for the children's librarians at Maringo, they're having a read-a-thon right now and they're just so thankful that they can come and get books they're interested in, they have some ambitious reading goals, so I just always thankful for the, all the librarians but especially the children librarians for us.
Okay, and I think um FJ had to leave.
Yeah.
Right, I don't see him, and Annie, that's it for the board, um council liaison, that's
So Kathy, um I saw in the minutes that there was a request for a timeline for installation of security cameras. It sounds like that's a priority for the board, and yet I thought I heard in your description of your meeting with um public work staff, that that was going to be consolidated.
Well, it's gonna be something that we discussed with the the facility engineer, so I I I think that Ted feels that we really need someone to look at all of these things and one, they kind of come one point of view. Um, so it's not that it's not prioritized, it's just that I don't think they feel like they can just jump in and take on the project without some guidance.
Because to me, it's, it's a different um animal, because one is looking at things from a facilities engineering standpoint. To me, security is a separate specialty. Um, and given the um in, strong interests that I've heard expressed here, um I would, if you want me to, I will talk to Ted and suggest that maybe this be separated, because I really think functionally it's different, you need a security consultant really to recommend the particular locations where it's most productive to have a security camera, and I know this is an issue, security that I've heard for years and years, I'd, I would like to separate and prioritize that.
Yeah, feel, feel free to speak with him, I think, I think part of what's going on too is that there's citywide security needs, so they're like, well, why, where are we gonna do the library all by itself? And and we wanna make sure what we do with the library is consist, you know, compatible with ever, whatever else happens, so I think that's part of it.
But this is different, this, there's a more urgent need here, I I know Arminé's talked about doing something at City Hall, but it, there's with as many people as you have.
Yeah. If you would like to bring that up, that would be
I would be happy to do that. Yes, my pleasure, um the other thing is, on behalf of city council, thank you to all of you that are working on Measure LL. Um, fingers crossed, but um I think we're gonna get strong support from our community, fingers crossed, and thank you.
We had a lot of good conversations at the open house, you know, people, it's amazing how many people are like, oh, I didn't know.
Yeah.
They have no idea, but I, but I love it, I'm I'm happy to support it, but um, you know, a lot of people just just don't know about it, so you have to hope that when they see the ballot question, which is like, you know, do you wanna have storytimes? And a great library, you know.
Just hopefully they'll go for it. We're texting voters right now. Forget voters, or, you know, people likely to vote, they're very positive.
Do we do any polling?
No. Yeah, and we still have a few lawn signs left, if you live in a high travel area, you can get a line, lawn sign from Olivia Guthrie, so for her landlord. On, any, any others?
Nope.
Okay, um Ellen, okay.
Oh, one, one other thing, um the last, we have more funds in reserve um than I anticipated, um in our general fund reserve, and so I would suggest that if you want to that if you want to submit a request for an additional appropriation, um and if you have a more urgent need, that you don't wanna wait until the next fiscal year budget to start thinking about what you might want, so that there's time to incorporate that then in the mid-year budget revised.
Okay, or do you think that that would apply to these matching funds for the critical infrastructure improvements? Or are you talking about like smaller amounts, like what are we talking about amount-wise?
Um, all I can tell you is that I was surprised, I think we've got, we're almost back up to um, w- w- we are into uh double digits in terms of the millions in um low, low double digits, very low double digits, but we, there is more money in general fund reserves than I anticipated, and so I think the more specific, the more concrete, and the more urgent as to why you're requesting this this mid-year adjustment as opposed to waiting to next year would be an idea, and to the extent that um the grant application has to represent that funds are available, that's an excellent um basis to request.
We'll try to, we'll try to use, hopefully get, even though the grant application isn't due until March, we'll try to get a pretty good preliminary idea, so that we can do that for the mid-year.
Okay, we are very fortunate that you're our council liaison.
We are.
Thank you. Ellen, friends, sorry, my phone was ringing, okay, so um friends have uh formed their nominating committee, so if any of you have anybody that might be interested in being on the friends board, please just reach out to me and I'll pass it on to the committee. Uh, we're also having our very first event in a long time, so uh with South Pasadena Beautiful and with um the library, we are um having a B event, so we're inviting you all to come on Wednesday, the nineteenth, at six thirty. Um, and the program features uh two presenters, a local bee keeper named Michael, and then I don't know how to say his last name, and another native expert, Hartnett, which
I don't know.
They're, they're hard names, I can't say them, so hopefully you can come for that, it should be uh very interesting.
I would be there, except it's council.
Yeah, it's really unfortunate.
About the date, we, we talked
We didn't, we didn't, yes, sorry.
Next time, we'll do it, we'll check the date.
Check the South Pass Chamber, is there the repository for community event calendar?
Theirs is not as comprehensive as ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, ours is better, so we, we had a conversation about planning and
Yeah, a good person in charge, they got really excited.
Yeah.
It's here in the community room, and she just got really excited and called Sean, and anyway, so we will, uh going forward, it will be, yeah, we'll check. So I just, our bookstore has done really well, they've raised twenty-five thousand through sales to the end of August, which is, you know, when you're talking twenty-five cent, fifty cent books, that's great, uh hu- hu- one thousand two hundred um in book sales um and fifteen hundred in The Last Chance, so that's where they're really making their money in The Last Chance, so um I know, is that's amazing, now, now, also check out our auction, which is on our our um website, there's an auction every month uh down in the library, and um it raises quite a bit of money for us. Our, our memberships did really well in August, they had six donation, one was five hundred dollars. Um, to date, we have two hundred and seventy-one members for thirty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so that's yeah, so one of the things that happened is we um sent out um postcards mid-year, and we had over three thousand dollars come in just from those postcards, so it was well worth it, and I'm gonna remind everybody, if you're not a friend, please join, and we would appreciate it. It's just you can go to the website and click the link and join, it's really easy, so uh I'm gonna keep reminding everybody. Um, the restoration concerts are in full swing, they had two concerts already, one I think was a makeup and um board members and the friends can attend once for free with no advance notice, and I'm sure that they would apply that with, for the trustees if they wanted to attend. Um, communications, we're reconsidering our monthly newsletter, it's a lot of work for Sally, so we're just and Nancy, so there's gonna be further discussion on how often we're going to do it, but there will be a November one. And Measure LL, make sure you vote, so that's my report. And then um I attended uh the front of South Pasadena Library meeting, and wow, you guys do a lot. I was, yes, I was, yes, there are a lot, a lot going on, and um, was there any? Um, yeah, and I, I, I thought this was interesting, they were saying when they sent out, um when they've noticing, when they sent out the postcards, that if they do a personal note, they get a little bit more feedback, so that's something that I think we all need to think about.
That's three thousand came from, right?
Because we all wrote.
Well, that came from the postcard, all of it, it was all the postcards.
Right.
Oh, not just the signatures.
Oh, we wouldn't know which one, it was all of them. Right, but it's, it's just something that, you know, I just, that it just struck me as, as interesting.
Well, one thing we did find out, though, if we write on them from now on, we can't
Oh, I know, that was, that was a hilarious conversation.
I just got Steph's in, in their letter, they actually wrote it, and it was in an envelope, so they hand addressed stuff in the letter and then stuff them, because it says Ed and Ellen.
Oh, depending on who you go to at the post office, you get recommended if you write something on a postcard and they don't, then they don't consider it both.
Oh.
So it was a hilarious conversation with
Yeah, bulk mail is like a whole
Preacher, that was, that was interesting, but personal notes do work, so just when anything that we do, I think personal notes kind of work, so, and that's all I had about with the trustees, the, the meeting that I want to and I have nothing else, just thank you all for your time and
Be careful of the library.
Any other, Annie, any other?
Oh, I have to step off, drop off.
Any other last comments, Jenny?
Um, when can we expect to receive the, either digital or?
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I have a copy, I mean, I'll send you the copy that they have, they won't have updated the slide with the, with the
Right.
readiness assessment, we had, we struggled with that slide too, when they showed it to staff, we were like we, we, we were part of it, and we go
I'm gonna officially adjourn this meeting at eight forty-five, so, and then Kathy, can we get more of these?
Yeah, sure, that's a Diana, I don't know if she's seen that, she's our little frequently asked.
Yeah, it's, but obviously, they have these, but this one is